So I'll call the meeting to order. It's 11 past seven and I'm joined by my colleagues, Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Walner, and Mr. Studo, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our first order of business will be public comment. So if anyone would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand or note in the chat room. Most everybody is joining us by, looks like they can raise their hand. And I see. I see none?
I do not see any hands up, Madam Chair.
No chat, no hands. So we will move on to the next order of business, which is to designate the position of Economic Development Committee member as a special municipal employee. And I guess we can go to Mr. Gilberto or Mr. Studo, whichever, whoever would like to.
Madam Chair, I'll give a brief introduction and Mr. Studo can fill in as necessary. You should have seen a, an email from the town planner who's joining us this evening, sent on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, requesting consideration to designate the members of the Economic Development Committee as special municipal employees. And my understanding is that, the reason for this is that they are looking to host a business-to-business type event that I'll ask Mr. Studo to elaborate on if he is so willing. But they're looking to do so at an outdoor venue where they can offer some food and beverages. And have identified a location. I think as folks know, the number of locations that would fit that venue here in North Reading are fairly limited. And the location that I know that some of the members are looking at is owned by a member of the Economic Development Committee. And so in order to be able to lawfully enter into an agreement to contract with that entity, the members would need to be designated special municipal employees. So that was sort of a quick explanation, but I will defer to Mr. Studo or to Mr. O'Neill, who I also know is here and is the Chair of the Committee.
Oh, great. Great. Mr. O'Neill, anything to add to that?
No, Mr. Gilberto's doing a fine job. Vinny might have some more he wants to talk about.
All right, Vinny.
Actually, since we're playing pass the buck, it is, Ms. Egan from the Chamber of Commerce actually has the pertinent information for the, for the board on this. So thank you for the introduction from Mike, but I can, I'll give it out to Lisa.
So this is, this is probably going to be a PSA of your event as well. I think we discussed it at our last board meeting. Mr. Studo mentioned it, but it was rather late in the evening. And I think we were the only ones listening to ourselves at that point anyway. So welcome, Ms. Egan. And for those in attendance, Ms. Egan runs the Reading and North Reading Chamber of Commerce. So welcome. And if you want to give us a little bit more information about it before we take a vote.
Of course. Thank you so much. And thanks for making time for this on the agenda. I really appreciate it. I've had the pleasure of meeting with the Economic Development Committee. We've been meeting more frequently. We have a lot of really great plans. And I think that we agree that there's a lot of desire for people to just connect in a safe way. It's been a long year for business owners and residents alike. And the EDC would love to have an annual event, as they have the last few years, to bring the community together, the business community, share some best practices, have the chance for safe in-person networking, as well as the opportunity to connect with people who may have opened businesses recently, or they might not know. And to share a little bit about what's going on in town and what progress is being made in terms of sewage and Concord Street, et cetera. So we identified a few priorities for having such events. And I think it is in the best interest of public safety to have an outdoor venue or a venue that's in a tent. So all of that pointed toward one particular venue with the best setup for it. We hope to have it on Tuesday, June 8th, before school is out. The weather should be nice and it will be in the evening after businesses are winding down, probably 5:30 to 7:00 or so. So just a couple of programming notes for businesses to hear, but really an opportunity for the Economic Development Committee to bring the business community together, reconnect, talk about how they got through COVID. And I really do think that that venue that we've discussed is best suited. And I realize that there needs to be a special vote in order to have there be any perceived conflict of interest. So I think that's all the highlights I have, but I do think there's a real desire for people to connect. I see it in my own business where we're planning events inside and hearing, talking to business owners weekly. So I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for the EDC to pull people together and really engender some goodwill and good feeling about the town being supportive of the business community and hearing firsthand as to what we can do as a team and as a town to support them as they come out of the pandemic.
Okay. To, oh, to my colleagues, I believe we had an opinion rendered regarding this, which is why it's come up for a vote. And I don't know if there's anything more, Mr. Gilberto, that you want to add to the discussion to inform the members as we take a vote on this?
Sure.
And/or then I'll turn it to my colleagues to see if they have any questions with regard to this.
You're absolutely right, Madam Chair. We consulted with town council as we regularly do when these types of questions come up. And we provided some feedback, which we also put in the meeting packet for the board members this evening. I will just, you know, I'll offer one final note, which is that from my understanding of the discussion regarding the planning for this event and the cost, we would be complying with the procurement law, which allows for following sound business practices for any contract up to $10,000. And we expect, at least the last that I heard, this would not exceed that amount. So this would not be a situation, would be anything, you know, a foul of the procurement law. You know, we, I think the committee by definition has been following sound business practices and trying to identify a location that meets their need and settle back at this. So, you know, this would cure any conflict of interest issue. It does not have anything to do with the procurement. That separately would be handled by me.
So, but in other words, it's a, it's an event that is EDC sponsored. And EDC, similar to what they did previously, will be paying the venue. So that's where the conflict of interest arises. So the EDC through the committee has chosen the, what it believes is the best venue to host this. And, and EDC funds, they have a small amount of funds that they, they use. And this is a use of some of the funds to promote economic development in our community. So they'll be using a portion of that funds to pay for the event. And that event will invite business owners from our community and from, you know, surrounding communities to this, to this venue. And because of the fact that the venue owner also serves on the EDC, that's where ethics issues are invoked. Is that it in a nutshell?
All correct, with the exception of whether the event will go outside the community. That I'm not sure. I'd have to defer to Mr. Studo or Mr. Egan, obviously.
Is it open to, similar to your other events, Ms. Egan, to other community businesses, neighboring community businesses?
I was envisioning that this would be a North Reading specific event where we'd hear about what's happening in town for North Reading businesses only. Of course, I could easily invite more, but I think that was the goal and the intention, especially since there's EDC town money to be spent. And we would support it and, you know, invite our North Reading members.
Okay. And just for the edification of my colleagues, Mr. Gilberto, are we taking a vote to deem anyone who serves in that role? In other words, members of the EDC will be considered special municipal employees?
That's correct. It would be every member of the committee. And they've asked for this on a temporary basis. I'm not aware of any such temporary designation. But what I can tell you is that this, as you know, this board reviews special municipal designation, special municipal employee designations each December. It would review this and make a separate determination about whether the designation needs to continue or not at that time.
Okay. And it, and also just one final thing being that, just for those in attendance, just like all the other, most all the other boards and committees, the members of the EDC are unpaid for their services. It's a volunteer service on that commission. So now let me see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Mr. O'Leary?
My only comment is that, you know, we should be doling out special employee status on a cautionary basis. Because as was pointed out, this is, you can't do it for one member. It's for the entire commission, which again, I don't foresee, I can't see any potential other issues of people looking to contract with the town or get paid by the town for services rendered. But that doesn't preclude it from happening either. So, you know, I would I would encourage us again to look at this on a semi-annual or annual basis rather than a carte blanche. Because there have been problems in the past with this designation. So I would just urge us to be cautious. And, you know, there are other venues of people who don't serve on this committee. But I also know that this, this particular venue would work nicely. So so if it's our intention to do this on an annual basis, I'll be supportive of it. If we're not, then I won't.
Okay. And I, I think to Mr., and to Mr. O'Leary's point, I think, you know, the board, the board could, could rescind this, just the same as we voted. We should probably, like Mr. O'Leary said, we, we kind of look at these at the end or close to the summertime when we're trying to fill all of those positions that, you know, we, we can't seem to fill. So we're going back to the same drawing, you know, pool of candidates that are around and want to, want to work those jobs. Okay. Let me see if we have any other questions, comments. Mrs. Gonzalez? Any, any questions or comments?
No questions, just in full support of this. It's a, it's a great thing to, to do for the community. And I'm just fully supportive of it.
Mr. Walner, questions, comments?
Yeah, on June 5th, we're going to be doing the town meeting. And I think it'll probably be handled the same way we've handled the previous two meetings, which is we go through painstaking efforts to keep people apart and, you know, follow all the protocol. And then three days later, four days later, we'll be doing this event. I don't know, you know, you know, is there a maximum amount of people that can come? Has the Board of Health input on this? And I just don't know the answer to the question, but I'm just wondering the optics of this coming up so soon after we just have a town meeting where we're putting people through great paces not to violate any CDC rules or the people at times. I'm just asking the general comment to see if that's been talked through.
Mr. Studo?
I can answer. So Rich, we, we went through this in the meeting several times. Part of the reason we picked June is, you know, if anybody, if it's anybody like me who is reading way more science than I need to daily, you don't have to follow the tea leaves to see where it's headed and how much safer things are happening. But to answer your question, as of right now, the horseshoe could have 100 people out there in a tent for an event. And it's, it's allowed. You know, so from a standpoint of, like, you know, just so, we, we thought of that. And I think that it's something where we kind of addressed that too. You may have been in one of the meetings too, Rich, Mr. Walner. But I think it's more of, it's for business owners and the field is that business owners are going out. And I think that in terms of the town meeting and the optics, I do think, I do think it needs to be separated because I don't think it's the same thing. Town meeting, this is a very specific event for a very specific group of people that we feel from feedback want to do this, where town meeting is a, something where we have an obligation to make it as, I don't know, as, as, as for everyone, right? So again, you know, no, good question because we talked about it, but I think at this point, it, in the EDC discussions, it was never, because we picked all the way out to June, I think there was consensus that this, you know, that date was going to work. And based on where everything's going, again, I mean, I'm the optimist here, but I don't be shocked if the only mandate left in June is an indoor mask mandate, if that. So I would just, don't be shocked if you see that soon. So I do think that the June 8th event outside, I don't, I don't foresee it an issue. But here's what we did say. If for whatever reason the reopening in trade slows, like train, I think we did mention that it's something that you could easily reschedule for safety. So if, I don't know if that is something, we, we definitely said that too. So it's not like, you know, so. And I don't know if Mr. O'Neill wants to add anything as well.
Well, Mr. Studo, I think, I, I'm, I'm hearing Mr. Walner's question is more pointed to making sure that there, the guidelines are followed, the social distancing guidelines are followed even in this event. So I, is that a yes or a no? I think.
Well, I mean, I can't control two business owners, you know, shaking hands at the horseshoe outside of the tent. Is that a good way to answer it? I mean, I, I, that's an unanswerable question. I mean, we're going to follow the rules right now state that everybody, that we could have this entire, I could, I could buy a drink for everybody in this meeting outside in the, in the state of Massachusetts says it's okay. That's the current rule. So I don't know, is that following it? I, I don't know. It's a hard, I don't know how to answer it. But yes, I mean, whatever the state allows us to do, we'll do, I guess. And right now, this would be allowed. I mean, this would be allowed like tomorrow. Forget about June 8th.
Okay, so.
I just wanted to add in if it came.
I know we're kind of veering off the topic, but I think his question related to relate to complying with COVID-19 requirements. Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I, I just, I think we're getting off topic. I mean, what's before the board is are we going to designate this group as special employee status or not, you know, as far as any venue or any timing of the, the event. And again, I wholeheartedly endorse the event and then the thought process behind it and the rationale for it. And I think it's going to be a very positive thing to be sponsoring and going forward with, you know. So as far as the protocols and all the rest, those are going to have to be followed anyway. So I think what's before the board is, are we comfortable in creating this special employee status for this, this group, regardless of what the event is going to be or not be?
No, agreed, Mr. O'Leary, but it's a pretty rational question for Mr. Walner to ask. We're making a vote and encouraging this kind of activity. And we're not even sure if the, the venue is going to be compliant with the requirements. And we, we don't want to, we don't want to propel an outbreak in North Reading. We've been doing.
My expectation is, my expectation is.
Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, please don't, don't talk, talk. Please don't. We'll do one at a time. I, I'm, I'm very good at letting us all talk one at a time. But I, I think it's a valid question to, with everything we've been doing as a community, everything we've been doing for to ensure that people are safe, I think it's a valid, it was a valid question. So I don't, not sure if we've got an answer to that. And again, if we can redirect ourselves to whether or not we want to allow this vote to consider all the EDC members as special municipal employees. Does anyone else have any questions with regard to that? All set. Oh, Mrs. Gonzalez?
I, I just have a comment as to the COVID-19 question that this event's being held at the horseshoe. It is a restaurant who I have the utmost faith in the owners. They deal with restrictions on a daily basis. And I have no question that they will make sure everything will be flatlined.
Okay. So with no other questions or comments, do we have a motion?
Excuse me, are we going to revisit this annually? Do we do the special employee status annually, Michael?
If we don't, we should, like Mr.
Yes, we do. Every December.
Okay. So for everybody that's designated as a special employee, every single one, we revisit it every year.
The human, through you, Madam Chair, the Human Resources Director solicits from those who have previously been designated, whether the need is continuing or not, and they want to bring it back to the select board to review about the same time we consider appointments, appointments. Yes.
Okay.
And my understanding is it's, it's position specific, not person specific.
Yes.
And, and so we're not looking at names so much as posts at when we revisit this in the annually.
Correct.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to designate the position of Economic Development Committee member as a special municipal employee.
Members or member?
Mem, member. So if you're a member of that, you would be one.
I see. Second, motion by Mistress Dudo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Manu Pelle is aye. The motion carries. Our next order of business is the 148 to 150 Park Street Development Zoning Proposal. And we have Mrs. McKnight joining us. We have a, our Chair of our, I believe we have the Chair of our zoning here, Chair of CPC here, Mr. Gilberto. Want to do a little, little introduction?
Yes, the town planner, Mrs. McKnight, has joined us. The Chair of the Planning Commission, Mr. Pierce, has also joined us. And I also believe that there are multiple members, I see the developer here, Mr. Wheeler, as well as multiple members of his development team as well, including Attorney Latham, who sent us a letter, I believe, the last week or the week before, which is in the board's packet, sort of following up on the last discussion of this matter, where the zoning article was reviewed. And I, my understanding is that the select would want to have a further detailed discussion relative to the particular development proposal at the address in question rather than the zoning itself.
Yes. Okay. So shall we hear Attorney Latham? Shall we hear from Attorney Latham? And do my colleagues have any questions for Attorney Latham? Good evening, Attorney Latham.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, could I have the opportunity to potentially share my screen?
That would be great. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Alberto, can you make, does he have ability to do that?
And, and if I may, so Mr. Alberto did a great job. Mr. Wheeler's here. Peter O'Grain of his engineering is here. Craig Seymour of DRG Advisory Services is here as well. Mr. Michael Gitten, LSP is here. My dad showed up to make sure I don't screw up. And basically I will share my screen. All right. And if you give me one second, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
So why, why, why senior housing? Because senior housing is frankly a North Reading housing goal. It's, it's listed as one of the overarching housing goals for the town. And likewise, senior housing has been identified in the, in the Housing Production Plan as, as a real North Reading, North Reading need. And obviously, these are sections that you don't need me to read them to you. But they basically emphasize the fact that the north, the portion of the North Reading population that is seniors is increasing dramatically. And most of them need to be able to downsize. And a good number of them also have some significant disabilities. Likewise, it's, it's, it's outlining basically in the master deed that there's this public need. It's consistent with the master plan. And that literally the, the future of the housing market in North Reading really depends upon seniors of North Reading being able to downsize. And many of them would like to stay, have the opportunity to stay in town. So the objective of, of the, you know, senior housing overlay district is to allow aging residents to have housing opportunities within North Reading so that they can stay in town and provide a range of housing choices within town and provide housing for the benefit of active seniors in order to meet and preserve North Reading's character and diversity. And at the same time, vitalize the historic downtown center. And so basically, I believe you've all seen the bylaw. What I basically did here was basically just try to summarize what it is. And so basically, it's an overlay. It, it does not, you know, replace the existing underlying zoning district. And the logistically, how it would happen is if, if it is approved by town meeting, it would basically be somebody submitting an application for site plan review and a special permit from CPC.
Attorney, Attorney Latham?
Yes.
Give it to me for one moment. I'm getting a bit of feedback that I'm not sure if others can hear. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to mute all and then ask you to unmute yourself, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Can everybody hear me? All right. So basically, a senior housing project under the, under the bylaw does not, it does not include assisted living and it does not include nursing homes. And a senior housing overlay district bylaw requires that a project be at least four acres in the size of land and be, have at least 250 feet of frontage and be within 250 feet of a public park or public common or public library with the idea of being walkability. It requires that handicap access from the project's parking garage to each unit. It requires an elevator and all senior, new senior buildings for senior housing. And it requires that there has to be an onsite senior common area amenity. Currently, it requires that there be 15% of the units be affordable in perpetuity and physically located on the premises. So there's no buyouts, there's no swap outs, there's no moving to other portions of, of the town. And the applicant, in, in our instance, Mr. Wheeler is actually proposing that all of the affordable units in this particular project would be handicapped or universally designed, which addresses a significant issue in North Reading because there is a shortage of affordable housing that is handicap accessible. It would require that there only, that at least one occupant be 55 years old or older. And it limits the senior housing project to no more than 50 units and no more than two bedrooms per unit. And all new senior buildings would be no more than 45 feet high and have minimum setbacks. 25 feet for the front line, 20 feet for the side and 20 for the rear. And it allows mixed use for, in multiple buildings, so long as it's compatible and they do not cover more than 40% of the gross site area and have minimum open space of 20% of the total site area. And so this plan here is the current proposed location for the senior housing overlay district. Of course, it's an overlay district. So in the future, if the town or anybody wanted to, they could try to go through the process and, and expand it if the town thought it was appropriate. This is the current location. And this is basically a plan. It consists of three different tax parcels. And it's on the property that was historically the McLean wagon manufacturing site. And that just gives you an artist rendering of what it was in 1906. And so with that being said, why, why the historic center? Well, it was identified in the master plan that the historic center was really a location where some people thought it would be a good place to have senior housing, to have clustered and mixed, mixed-use pocket. And in addition to that, it's obviously close to the senior center. It's close to the emergency services, close to the libraries, it's close to the town common. It's actually walkable to the sports fields. And that's the key. It's walkable and it's in the center. This is the existing condition of the property. We have the aerial here and it's the property right next to the police and fire department across from the Flint Library. And it consists of basically those four buildings you see there and the parking areas that are there, sort of like an arrow. And then, of course, you have the street view. And as part of this project, there would be the preservation of the historic McLean House. And, and Peter O'Grain will talk about that more in detail. But the gist of it is, is to put it on a real foundation so that it will last for another 200, 300 years at least. And to move it back away from the street to improve site distances. And what we see down below is existing condition with the steel fabrication company. And at this point, if, if I could turn it over to Peter O'Grain to discuss the engineering aspect, I'll, I'll mute myself. I'm still going to share the screen though, because I guess I'm going to be running the photos.
Mr. Latham, do, do you have the overlay of the proposed development on to this? Or is that what your engineer is going to be showing us?
That, that's what the engineer is going to be showing, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. If you want to go. Basically, I'd like to just familiarize you a little bit more with the, with the site itself. As Chris said, the, the site. As Chris said, the, the site, as you're heading easterly along Park Street, it's immediately after the Public Services, the Fire and Police Station. And it rests, lies behind the historic McLean House. What you see in this particular slide is, in, in brown is the roof of the McLean House, and in white outline is where we intend to move the McLean House. The reason we're moving it is twofold. It does have a very poor foundation under it. There's moisture, obviously, in the days this was built, the moisture barriers weren't put in the foundations. And so, in order to preserve the sills and everything, it can use a new foundation. And, and when we do it, we'll be moving it back from the street and in an easterly direction. So it will improve not only the site distance from our driveway, but the site distance from the Public Services building, which has a kind of a limited site distance looking easterly along Park Street as well. As Chris mentioned, the site is currently occupied by three commercial industrial uses. There's the office building where Mister Wheeler has his offices. There's an automotive use, and then there's a steel company that fabricates steel and, and delivers it in fairly large trucks. And, and as you go down into the site, I think you're probably all familiar with the site as you go along Park Street. But as you go down into the site, the site is largely not vegetated. On the very easterly side of it, behind the automotive use, is a large parking lot, and with some fairly significant trucks parked in the very back of it. And then, the kind of triangular shape that you see in the middle of the site is a large, compact gravel area where trucks load and unload the steel that's fabricated on the site for, for, when it's sold and when it's back distributed for the commercial uses that it's, that's made of it. As you go further into the site, there's a fairly significant wetland area, and the, and the line that you see on here, that's basically the black line, demarks the difference between the upland area and the, and the wetland area. And the upland area of this site is pretty consistently over 10 feet above the wetland area. So there's no concern as far as this being in the, in the flooding issue, a flooding issue. And I think you can see from the disturbance that shows on the site, there's very limited vegetation between the existing uses and the, and, and the wetland area. Again, the white outline that you see here on the left-hand side of it shows the limited amount of surface parking that we have for the proposal. There's a drop-off area, some surface parking spaces for visitors and, and the service vehicles that might come to the site. And then, the outline of the building. The building has been specifically designed so that the streetscape is fairly modest and broken up so that it doesn't look like a big building. But the, the grades drop off, and it houses the parking underneath it for the 50 units that are contained within the building. And then, the bulk of the units, as you can see, rests sort of behind that first streetscape of the building itself. If we could see the next slide. So, the proposed conditions, there's been a lot of concern about being on the river or near the river and so forth. The, the, this slide is designed to show you the resources on the site. Starting at the very bottom of the slide, the solid blue line that you see is the edge of the river based on the DEP definition of, of that. And then, the next 200 feet up to the dotted and dashed blue line is the, what's called the riverfront area, and is a resource in the, in the wetlands regulations. We don't propose any activity at all in that, that riverfront area. We're, we're intending to leave that natural or where it has been already disturbed by prior uses. It will be revegetated. Moving then in an orderly direction up the site, the first solid line that you see there is the edge of the bordering vegetated wetland. And above that are the two buffer zones that the North Reading Conservation Commission looks at. The first is a 12-foot no disturb zone, and the second, a 30-foot zone, which is not in their bylaw, but in which they like to see no building construction. So, we've been mindful of those when we looked at the, the site plan. We also have, have limited our activities as far as the actual 100-foot buffer zone, a limit of their jurisdiction is concerned as well. And the last line that you see, the kind of dotted line that runs through the building, is the 100-foot buffer zone. And the activities we have in that are minimal. There's two small portions of the building and a small, small portion of our access and parking lot, as I say. Most of the parking, the bulk of the parking is below the building underground, and you won't see it. There's also been some concern about the soil absorption system, and two things. The elder housing has a lower flow than typical housing on a per-bedroom basis, and that's by the State Sanitary Code. So, the flow from the projected 50 units all being two-bedroom would only be 7,500 gallons. And it's proposed to have the actual soil absorption system. That is the, the, the place where the effluent is reintroduced to the groundwater regime, completely outside the buffer zone. In fact, as you can see on this chart, it varies from about 103 feet off of the wetland area to 150 feet off of the wetland area, and occupies the most northerly portion of the site. So, I think that, that in looking at this site and seeing how it might be utilized for this use has been, I think, a, a significant concern for what the existing uses are, what the existing disturbed areas are, and what can be done, being mindful of the environmental regulations that are in force and effect. Next slide, please. The other thing is that, in this particular instance, the developer is the owner of the historic McLean House, and he wanted to incorporate it into the architecture. And so, there's been quite a bit of time spent with the various historical committees and other people in the town trying to come up with a streetscape that is mindful of the, the historic nature of the, the center of town, and also the scale of buildings in the town. And we show you these renderings. The first one on the top is looking sort of past the library toward the McLean House, and what you're going to see from that streetscape looking from, frontally from, perspective from the library across Park Street to the site. The yellow house that you see in the center is part of the, the new construction. And then, the McLean House, the white building, is the existing building. So you can see from a scale standpoint, it's, it's, I think, very well done from, from that perspective. And the other perspective that you see is if you were riding along Park Street past the fire station, the entrance to the fire station is the first driveway that you see. Our driveway to the project is the second driveway that you see in this rendering. And you can, you can see that the, the idea was to break it up in, in small facades in order to maintain the sort of historic character of the center and, and yet house a, a significant building. I think that includes my portion of the presentation, and I thank you, Selectmen, for hearing us this evening.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, if, if Craig could possibly come on and briefly talk about financials? Craig Seymour?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you. I'll be brief in respect for your time. I was asked to look at the fiscal impact that this project will have on the town of North Reading. And fiscal impact is the, essentially, looking at the tax flows. The tax revenues that come off the project, less the municipal service costs in order to provide, continue to provide in a level of services that you have in the past. Next slide. From the revenue perspective, we're estimating that the assessed value of this property when fully occupied is going to be a little over 26 million, and that's going to generate over $400,000 in annual tax revenues. The existing property pays about 32.6, so netting that out of the property taxes leaves a net of 379,000. It also is going to generate annual excise taxes from the automobiles that are, will be there. It's not a big number, but we estimate that about $37,000. And other revenues from, just on a per capita basis, from fines, fees, and charges, and so on, adds another 19 for total revenues of $436,000 on an annual basis, and that's in today's dollars. Next one, Chris. The municipal service costs were estimated by looking at both the households, the average household costs of supporting households in the community, plus the small number of businesses that are there, and that gets split up between the two types of activities. For the variable costs, we're looking at a total annual cost of about $2,300 per household in average municipal costs, $185 per employee. We're basing this on the potential for having nine employees at the facility. It's currently five. That's there in Mister Wheeler's operation. And that's about $118,000. Does not include education costs, because we do not anticipate having any school-aged children. You know, on the outside chance there could be one, they're very rare, and in most circumstances I've seen around the Commonwealth, they are either temporary or they're very rare to begin with, if at all. Lastly, is a summary, the next slide is a summary of these two, which shows that this has a, a net fiscal, that positive fiscal impact of over $300,000 into the town coffers a year. Has a cost-benefit ratio of 2.7. And in addition, there's going to be one-time revenues for building fees and connection fees. And obviously, those go to the departments that are going to be doing that work, but they're substantial, and, well, almost $400,000 a year between the two of them, which obviously helps offset some of the costs that those budget items, those departments may have. So, that's, the last thing is kind of the intangible benefits to the community. While it's under construction, a lot of the construction workers may be spending money in, in the community for lunch, dinner, whatever it might be. Household spending typically averages $35,000 to $40,000 per year on select categories like restaurants, food out, food and beverage, health, personal items, things that are available within North Reading itself. And this, this project is going to generate well over half a million dollars a year in that level of retail spending. Now, it's not all going to be spent downtown, it's not all going to be spent in North Reading, but a good portion of it will, because the whole idea with the walkability of this community is people can walk up the street to get their coffee, they can walk to the store, and they can walk through a lot of other activities and spend some of that money. And as a result of that, it's going to add more vitality to the town center and just bring and keep, hopefully keep, people who are, you know, who are residents now, give them an opportunity, as Attorney Latham mentioned earlier, to stay in town and continue to contribute to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Attorney Latham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to note that Mister Mark Hall is here today from the Historic District Commission, but before, if you want him to speak, we request that the Select Board support the overlay district. And if, if the board members don't support it, we request that you give us some positive feedback as to how you think we can improve this project and, and what your issues are. We greatly appreciate it. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We'll take questions in a minute. Just want to see if Mister Hall wants to add anything. And I'm assuming, I believe you already told us at our last meeting, you had already had me, and you said it again, you've had meetings with the Historic Commission. But Mister Hall, any other comment that you might want to impart? I can't see him, but I can see he's here. No? All right, let's go to my colleagues, Mister O'Leary. You're muted.
I'm muted, yeah. Just in the, in the bylaw, it stipulates that one occupant has to be 55 years or older, and I, and I know that some of the other homeowner associations and, and community of 55 and older have it in their bylaws, I guess, in their deeds. You know, what happens to the, it's the one that's 55 or older, the other one's younger? Is there any way to address, or has been contemplated, and maybe this is to the CPC rather than the developer here? You know, if the 55-year-old person or older passes away or has to go to a nursing home, are the, is the other occupant forced to sell? I'm just curious, and I don't know how other communities have handled that.
Attorney Latham, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. In, in the proposed bylaw in section 200-165, "In the event of the death of a qualifying occupant of a unit or foreclosure or other involuntary transfer of a unit, unit in a senior housing development, a two-year exemption should be allowed for the transfer, to, to, for the transfer of the occupancy of the unit to another eligible household." A senior housing development does, and obviously doesn't include nursing home or hospital. The, the reason it was originally drafted with the two-year was to not cause an immediate dislocation of the family and hopefully provide more time for the spouse, surviving spouse, to maybe reach age of eligibility. But we're totally open to the board's suggestions, and I, I don't know if CPC has any suggestions on that as well.
Mister O'Leary, any other follow-up or questions?
Just a question to maybe Mister O'Gran. And I previously mentioned as far as the access and address for the public safety facility. I thought there may be an encroachment on, on our part under the property. I wonder if you had a chance to take a look at it and whether there would be a granting of easements to the town?
Yeah, I think there is a, a little encroachment there, I believe, and it shows on our TACO plan. And we had said that we would, we would grant the town an easement. I think that's the easiest way to do it. I, I'm no expert in municipal law, but I think you could do that without a big town meeting action. I think it could just be granted as an easement to the town.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm good for right now, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Gonzalez? Any questions?
You're on mute.
Ma'am.
Sorry. Just a question about the, you mentioned the affordable units all being handicap accessible. That's not a requirement, correct? Just, they'll just be accessible?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Oh, this, Attorney Latham, yes, please.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It, it is basically what's being proposed by Mister Wheeler. You are absolutely right. It is not written into the bylaw as it's drafted right now. But Mister Wheeler is, is agreeable to that. We, we identified when we were reviewing the, the master plan that the town has a serious issue with lack of affordable disability housing. So that, that is something that we think would, would be a benefit to the town as well as those particular individuals.
And as far as the septic system, there's how much? I'm not sure how to ask this question. What is the capability of the septic system? And how close to the wetland? How much of an effect will it have?
I will defer, if I could, to Mister O'Gran. Hopefully, you can still see the plan that shows a location of where the septic system is.
Yeah, the, the, when you say how effective is the septic system, I mean, septic systems have been around a long time, and, and there are state regulations as to how close they can, they can be to wetlands and to tributaries. In this particular instance, the state requirements would only require the soil absorption system, which is the place where the, the effluent is reintroduced to the groundwater to be 50 feet from the wetland edge and 100 feet from the, from the river's edge. We're going to be 300 feet from the river's edge roughly and 100 feet from the wetland edge. So, we're, we're in excess of the requirements which the State Sanitary Code has a presumption that says that that provides sufficient treatment if you're the 50 feet and the 100 feet. So, we're in excess of that now. The, the biggest thing about the, the, the nature of effluent when it's reintroduced is that it does, the effluent gets diluted significantly. And in our instance, we have only a wetland on the, on one border of the property so that the, the, and the, we have a single direction in which the groundwater likely flows. Groundwater likely flows in the direction of the topography. So that when the soil absorption system is placed where we've indicated it, it will have a significant travel time before it ever gets to the river. before it ever gets to the river. It'll, it travels first of all vertically, and that's one of the reasons I made the point that, that almost immediately we're ten feet above the, the wetland and probably at the side of the soil absorption system where, where twenty feet above the wetland. So it will travel first vertically, which is a significant die-off in bacteria, and then horizontally for dilution towards the river. So it's, it's far in excess of what's required by the state regulation, which is four feet above the groundwater and, and as I said, fifty feet to a wetland and a hundred feet to the river.
And, and what was the capability of it?
I'm not sure how, what you, how you're using the word capability. I, 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 I mean, it's, it's, it's designed to, to treat seventy-five hundred gallons a day, which is the expected flow, expected peak flow from this facility.
Okay. And could it handle more than that if necessary?
Yeah, it could, but I mean, the, the, the sanitary code requirements require certain standards. And in this instance, a hundred and fifty gallons per unit for a two-bedroom unit is considered to be the peak flow for elder housing. So it, it's, it wouldn't fail if you had a little extra flow in it from some slug flow or something like that. But you would not be allowed, design-wise, to have any more units flow into it. So you can't increase the number of units.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Waller?
Yeah. So two things. One is Mark Hall didn't say anything about it, but I do, I'm aware that the HGC has been working very well with this project. And, you know, they, they've made some great changes to the outer look of the project to make it more compatible for our downtown. So I appreciate that work that's happened. My concern is, and I heard somebody say it, and I was looking at the slide, now looking at the speaker, but local preference housing is, is, is correct. That is what we want to have happen, is that North Reading residents have the first option to be able to get into these units. And, and I've read, it was section D somewhere, I read yesterday that it's in there, but can you be very specific for all of us about exactly how that will be implemented and how that will be enacted? So that the, the North Reading residents have first options to be able to get into these units either at the onset or even as they turn over, how that works? So if someone can answer that question, please, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, there is a preference for North Reading residents is listed in the bylaw. And the bylaw itself has been drafted, so it's in definitions are under state law and federal law and the Commonwealth Smart Growth. We also use many of the state's models for inclusionary housing and things like that. So for the affordables, basically there's going to be a lottery. And one of the, in the lottery process, the preference would be one of the elements. So they're, they're obviously, as part of the lottery process for the affordable housing, there'd be a preference towards North Reading residents.
Okay. And what about the other units? So that's fifteen of the fifty units. What about the other thirty-five?
We're open to suggestions. I mean, the, the other units, obviously, there's, there's eight under this proposal that would be affordable units. In terms of the other units, they're obviously going to be market rate. And our objective is to have it primarily be for North Reading residents. But it, it is going to be market dictated, so, but if you have any suggestions, we're more than open to them.
Well, I mean, I think the suggestion is to allow some reasonable time for first applicants to be North Reading residents. I mean, I think that would be the most obvious solution to that. I mean, give them, you know, a succeed window to get in there before it gets advertised outside of the community, because I think that's the, that's the, if we're going to succeed in doing a local preference, that's what it's about, right? Just give people a chance to get in there. So, I mean, I'm not an expert in this thing, and I don't know what other communities have done, but I'd like to see something like that built into the rules or bylaws or however you're going to put it, so that way we allow that to actually happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I took notes.
Thank you, Mr. Waller. Mr. Studo?
I'm all set. Thank you.
I did have a, just a couple of questions with regard to this slide that we're looking at. It's probably maybe for you, Attorney Latham. So this slide that we're looking at, the Ipswich River is in the darker green portion on the, to the south of the proposed, right? We can't see it in, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. So, so basically, the, the bank of the Ipswich River, and, and I'll defer to Peter O'Gren who composed this plan, but the bank of the Ipswich River is actually the dark blue line at the very bottom of the image.
That's, that's correct.
So that, that's the bank, that's the outer bank from which the measuring point is for the, the state River Protection Act. So the, the State River Protection Act has two zones. It has a hundred foot, and then it has a two hundred foot. And the second blue line is the two hundred foot under the Massachusetts River Protection Act.
So.
That whole two hundred feet is referred to as the riverfront area. So it's the edge of the river is the solid blue, and up to the dotted blue line is the two hundred foot riverfront area.
So if I'm looking at, this is, this is, we're looking at a bird's eye view of this, and that T-shaped building is what's being proposed here with the fifty units, right? I, I mean, in the lighter green area, there's a T-shaped building.
Yes.
But that is actually being built, you know, almost into that area to the south, to the southeasterly corner here. So what, what you can see from this overlay is the, this, the shed building, which is, I think, that long rectangular building in the middle, sort of in the middle at the, at the, yeah, that, that's, that's, that's better, that's a better image, I think. So this would be built so that T-shaped or sideways T-shaped is where you're proposing to build this. But it comes, it comes right up almost onto that riverbank. It looks like in the pictures that we received. So if, if you look at the picture, that, not only the police station, but that, that middle shed, so the police station adjacent in that middle shed looks like the river is right behind it. And you can see that from the picture that was included in the, in your letter. So my concern would be, so that T-shaped building not only is going to be, it's going to expand greatly what's existing there, which is just basically pavement, but you're also proposing to build underneath that parking underneath that. So you're going, obviously, is that underneath the entire building that you're proposing the parking?
Yes, the, the parking goes underneath the entire building, but actually putting the building there represents an improvement from the, as far as the, any kind of discharge is concerned, because that's either pavement or gravel parking lot that we're building on. And both of those have a high runoff and a high potential for pollution, whereas roof water is presumed to be clean under the Wetlands Act. And so we'll be able to take that water and infiltrate it into the, into the ground and, and it will go back into the river in a, in a clean form. It's, it's an improvement to have the roof there.
Okay.
And, and again, the, the dotted line is not the, the river itself. The river itself is defined way out two hundred feet away. The, that dotted line is what they call the riverfront area. And actually, under the state regulations, you can build in that area. You can, you can, you can build in any area that's previously disturbed. And you can do, you can disturb ten percent of the riverfront area under the regulation.
Okay, but this isn't being built into the riverfront area?
Not at all. We're not going to touch.
Not, and the proposal isn't supposed to be disturbing the, the riverfront area even by ten percent, right?
That's correct. And furthermore, the buffer zone to the wetland, which goes even further upland, we have an opportunity to restore a, a significant portion of that, that kind of triangular shape, that's the only way I know how to describe it, is an earth parking lot, which there's a lot of runoff from. That, that, we'll be able to restore that in the, in the buffer zone by revegetating it. And, and we intend to work with the Conservation Commission to see how that, they'd like that to go. But we would think about native plantings and things of that nature.
Sort of confirmations that you just gave hold true even with the underground being proposed for this?
Yes, the, the, the underground parking, you can't have any runoff discharge from the underground parking. So we, you have to take that effluent and, and put it, put it in a tank and, and pump it away. You can't discharge it.
So the underground parking is going to be within the footprint of the building itself, the proposed building itself?
That's correct.
Okay. And for these fifty units, they apartment units or condominium units?
They're condominium. Supposed to be condominium.
So they'll all be for sale?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my, my last question is for the, for, for an overlay district, you can use the zoning that's permitted through the overlay or you can use the existing? And can you use a combination of both of those? I mean, they're very similar in terms of my read of them, but are you allowed to use both, not just one or the other, but both in terms of this particular proposal?
Ma'am, so on this property, the, a person would have to choose whether they want to go under the existing bylaw or whether they want to go for the overlay. They can't, they can't mix and match the underlying bylaw with the overlay. It's either, you, you have to choose which one you want to do.
So was the, so the intent in sort of keeping that other business uses available, would there be stores for this or anything like that proposed for the, the residents? Would there be amenities like that that might be built onto this or as part of this?
Yeah, ma'am, the bylaw, so in, in terms of what we're currently, the proposal is for mixed use, potentially having mixed use. The applicant is only frankly put in mixed use currently in regards to his own office, which is located in the historic McLean House. It, because the bylaw does have mixed use as something that is potentially allowable in, in the overlay district, that would have to be approved, however, by CPC to be something compatible with the senior housing project.
Okay, so if it's something that they, that later on might fit in, it would still have to go back to be reviewed?
Yeah, CPC would be the ultimate, they'd be the arbitrator as to what they deem to be compatible with the senior housing.
All right. I just have one, one, one more, one more question. The existing businesses on the premises, I mean, you were all here and sat through our back and forth, back and forth, back and forth with regard to a business event that's planned. We, we are trying to encourage business, not lose businesses. What is going to happen to those existing businesses that are there already?
I don't know if Mr. Wheeler wants to speak in regards to them, but steel fabrication, that's not going to be compatible. It's not going to be a mixed use with the existing, you know, or the proposed condition. So that, that wouldn't be compatible. And, and obviously, the automotive repair wouldn't be compatible either.
No, I mean, I, that's kind of obvious. So are they being, they're going to be told to have to leave, in other words? They have to leave?
I believe that they are aware of the situation.
This is Bruce Wheeler.
Hi, Mr. Wheeler.
And we've been neighbors with Cronin Steel for almost two decades. Mike Cronin is planning to retire next year. And he's, he, he's considering closing down the business or selling the business. But he, he's let me know that he's planning on retiring as far as, you know, timing of, you know, ending his, his lease. He's, he's given me notice with regard to that. With regard to Lou's Automotive, they're aware of this, of, of our plans to develop the property. They like very much where they are, and it's, it's, it's a nice location for them. But they're, they're making plans for relocation in the future.
Okay. Okay, I, I think that's all for me. Thank you. Any, any of, anyone else have any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Hi, Mr. Hall. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good. You have something you want to add?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute earlier, but yeah, I say that I'm the Chairman of the HGC, Historic District Commission. And my group supports this project. We worked with the developer, met with them three times at least, and worked out some changes that the the developers agreed to, to do. And we're just waiting for that list to be put in writing so we can vote again on it. We did vote on it verbally, which need to have it in writing in the application for certificate of appropriateness. And we, we, we think that's going to go through very smoothly. But we are all unanimously are in support of this project. And cooperation with the developers been very, very easy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, to, to my colleagues, any other questions?
Madam Chair, just, just a relation to the, the roof runoff again. Are you putting in a filtration system for the roof runoff? Or are you just going to let it run into the natural vegetation? Because I know it's in developments, they, you know, they filter it.
The, the roof runoff would, would, it probably would go through some kind of treatment, just settling in a tank or a, and, and have a, a trap just in case there's any kind of contamination that gets in there. And I'm not thinking of, I'm thinking of contamination like leaves and sticks and stuff like that. But then we would infiltrate it into the ground. That's what, that's what the DEP wants you to do. The first thing is, is to, as long as you don't have a metal roof, you can, you can infiltrate roof runoff directly, and that's what we would do.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all set then. Thank you for, again, coming before us and giving us more information on this. It's quite helpful, I think, to our, informing us regarding the proposal.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't think it's on for both, but we'll become, we'll be, we'll be taking a look again at the draft warrant. So we'll move on to our next order of business, which is to review the updated fiscal year 2022 revenue and expense plan. And there we go. We have, I did see Ms. Rourke is here and Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you.
We're all muted. So Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you. That's correct. Yes, we are here to provide updates for the board regarding two components of our annual budget process. The first is an update on the revenue and expense plan to really be to go through the plan as it was reviewed with the financial planning team on Friday of last week, some members of which are here this evening. And then secondly, to go over some, the resulting recommendations to balance the fiscal year 2022 municipal operating budget. And through you, Madam Chair, if it's okay, and if she's ready, I'll turn it over to the Finance Director, Liz Rourke. Hi, Liz.
Thank you, Ms. Gilberto. Ms. Rourke?
Liz will do a much better job than I did last time going through the revenue plan.
No, no. Tonight's presentation is very straightforward and simple, so, you know, you gave a very complex presentation, Michael. Good evening, everybody. If it's okay with you, Madam Chair, may I share my screen?
Of course.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so quickly, we only have eight slides, so I will not be long. As the town administrator mentioned, the financial planning team met on Friday morning, last Friday morning. To review the latest and greatest FY22 revenue and expense plan. And a few changes have been made to the. Revenue and expense plan. And we will also review municipal and school budget updates. Under local receipts, we found that we were able to increase the payment in lieu of taxes by $25,000. So we went from having a budget number of 300,000 to 325. We also increased municipal Medicaid by $5,000. We went from 30,000 to 35,000. We also, in the past, have done the following two items. And this year again, we find that we need to fund school and municipal retirements. With free cash, which decreases fixed costs by 200,000. We also will be funding school and municipal capital plan raise and appropriate items each year under the capital. Improvement Plan. There is funds set aside for raise and appropriate, and that amount is $250,000, and that will be funded with free cash. So instead of capital items being funded with raise and appropriate in the capital warrant article. We will be funding those items with with free cash. Just a quick budget update. And this was all, you know, noted on our latest and greatest revenue plan with the changes that I just mentioned above. Fixed costs total. The municipal available funds total and the schools. Available funds total, which go towards their each municipal and school operating budgets. So we have 22,608,179 in fixed costs. Which fixed costs include regional school assessments to general liability insurance to. Non-exempt debt service to health insurance to workers' comp. You know, those are various items for individuals who are not aware are, you know, in tune with what our revenue plan. Incumbences for fixed costs. The municipal revenue that is available is 17,824. And the school revenue that is available is 34,180. For a total of 74,613,314. The budget requests. For the municipal side, total 18,77401. Which leaves a shortfall or budget gap of 253,000. The school side has departmental or modified level services budget request of 34,352,117. Leaving a budget shortfall or budget gap of 171,202. For a total, school, I mean, municipal combined shortfall of 424,384. So a quick budget update on on ways to reckon reconcile our budget shortfalls on both the school and municipal side. We are able to pull out one-time items and fund those items with free cash. So we are pulling out DPW small capital and funding that with free cash. We are pulling out fire department recruit training overtime. This is a one-time. Cost for two new hires. Due to two potential retirements. And that will be funded with free cash as well. Also, fund school one-time costs of 75,000 with free cash and school small capital items of $10,000 with free cash. On the municipal side, with our new revenue plan that we started probably three years ago now. We now break out some offsets that go directly to the municipal and to the school side. And at the last meeting. The trash fee was discussed and the trash fee has increased 123,970 dollars over FY21. So the municipal offsets was an increase of 122,1970 dollars. There was also a transfer from the solid waste stabilization fund of 36,593 that took place. With the increase in the trash fee. And we also took a look at the building departments and we increased the offset from 104 lower revolving funds. Over FY21 by $3,000. After going through the past, the last two slides. You will see that. The available. Funds for both the municipal and school side. Yes, stay the same. However, the items discussed. That are being funded with free cash reduce the budget requests. And that then leaves a surplus on the municipal side of $10,750. And a short budget shortfall on the school side of 86,202. For an overall combined shortfall of 75,452. And after discussions at the financial planning team meeting on Friday. This school department feels very confident that they. Will have their budget reconciled and have no, you know, no issue with this. But I will defer to the town administrator if he wants to speak at all to this point.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Liz. And that's correct, some of you may know that the school committee has had it, you know, at least one. Workshop style discussion where they tried to identify areas. And what was relayed to us is that they've identified some areas for savings. They've also identified some areas, I believe, where. They're going with very conservative estimates because of the unknowns associated with with COVID. And so I I don't want to speak for the school committee, but I can tell you that I think those who were on. The virtual meeting with representatives of the school committee, I think there was an understanding that that we were that we were there in terms of being able to reconcile the budget overall between now and May 10. That they had some steps that they would be looking to take. You know, within their operating budget, but that they could address that. And I think it was acknowledgement that this was certainly a significant improvement from the situation that they were looking at. Even, you know, 10 days ago, in terms of what the budget was looking like. So, you know, I didn't want to show that shortfall number as a zero, because I know there is still some work for the school committee to do, but. We took away from the meeting with a high level of confidence that they would be able to do that. So, you know, I don't want to mislead folks that somehow that there's a significant issue with the school. Committee budget, because I do not believe there is at this time, but I believe, you know, out of respect for them, that they have some work that they're going to do to finalize. And I believe they're scheduled to do so on Thursday of this week at a continued budget hearing. So thank you, Liz, for the opportunity to add to that.
Okay, now we'll go to questions. Mr. O'Leary?
Just as far as the department had proposals and additional requests that were made, you know, of the board. We seem to embrace some of them. Were there any accommodations for those? And if so, what were they? And which ones were not accommodated?
Madam Chair, through you, so we have a couple more slides to go through that would take us to that the next portion, the second agenda item, if you will. So we can do that right now, take it together if you'd like, or however you see that.
And then the another couple of questions was in relation to the trash fee and the discussion that we had. Discussions that we've had. There's been no adjustment in relation to the suggestion made by Mr. Larray. And I thought it was pretty legitimate questions that were raised in relation to. Covering some of the municipal costs in the tax rate additionally and the tax rate as opposed to through the user fees. And then I'll wait for the rest of the presentation, maybe I'll ask some other questions, or maybe they answer my questions.
Through you, Madam Chair, we did not deviate from the previous custom of setting the setting the rate to match. The total solid waste expenditures for the fiscal year 22. Budget, it is something that we expect to look at along with the recycling committee as we move forward for the FY. Budget, so we could see that there's some, you know, change in that 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 occurs. Perhaps either in the rate or in reducing the reliance on stabilization fund. We didn't make an adjustment for FY22, just based on where we're at at this stage in the budget game. And the budget plan, but we we did, we did look to, we are looking towards that for FY23.
And and just one other question, Madam Chair, through you, just the, as far as forecasting, what is the financial planning team through the administration? Have done as in relation to forecasting free cash for. For the upcoming fiscal year in relation to the federal funds that are becoming available to the town? Because I don't see, again, I don't see the expenditures of funds from that source. In this proposal at all, and we're anticipating. I would think a substantial. Amount of money. Moving forward, which is a good thing, because again, we're going to need it for sure. But again, it's one-time funds.
Through through you, Madam Chair.
Or Mr. Gilberto. Question of the day, Mr. O'Leary.
And Mrs. Gonzalez and Ms. Pearl, but Mr. Keller, know from your participation in discussions. You know, we are very well aware of the significant anticipated influx of funding from the federal government. To the tune of a pro- estimated to be to the tune of 4.5 million dollars available to the town for use for. Very specific purposes over a three to four year period. We we got the first, the good news is we got the first wave of guidance from the Treasury Department. Shortly, a short time ago. The bad news is all that it said is make sure that you have basically a taxpayer ID number. Right, so so we're waiting awaiting more guidance, but really the strategy that the Finance Director and I are are. Are applying to this budget is to recognize that that funding is there, recognize that it is limited in. But to utilize funds generated on our own. At the at this stage, through conservative budgeting over the past two fiscal years, last fiscal year and this fiscal year. In order to stabilize the budget through the one-time cost in the way that the Finance Director identified. And the reason is because we don't know exactly how we can apply those other funds in future years. But we know that they'll be available to us, so we really try to use this budget, the FY22 budget. As a bridge to those funds, the first batch of which we expect to to receive in the coming weeks. And which we will hold in a grant account and Finance Director can speak more to that for use over those multiple years. But we we tried, we're planning for it and we have a, we didn't go through the three-year plan on here, we have a three-year outlay. At this point that we're looking at with the financial planning team and we'll probably. Add a year to that when we roll over to fiscal year 2022 on July 1st. But for now, we're trying to operate and recommend a budget to the board that relies on the knowns at this point, which is our own resources at this stage in the game. With the exception of some of the small reimbursements that we know are available from previously distributed grant funding. And some of the school grant programs that the school is aware of as well. And I'm going to stop myself through you, Madam Chair, to the Finance Director, is there anything you want to add to that, Liz? Like, anything I missed on that?
No, I I I believe you, you know, covered it. Basically, you know, the money that we receive from the federal government under the our funding. Will be placed within a grant fund and no appropriation is necessary. So basically, sit and wait for further guidelines, really. And then we can, you know, decide at that point on how how those funds. Should and can and will be spent.
Anything else, Mr. O'Leary?
Just just in relation to that, so it's going to go into a grant fund. It can be utilized by the department through requests through the administration. Without appropriation from town meeting. And what oversight role will this board play? Or any or is there any oversight as far as the expenditures of those funds and how they're going to be monitored?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilberto.
So I anticipate that, you know, much in the fashion that we have worked with the financial planning team regarding the many COVID-related grant funds that have became available over the past 14 to 15 months. The same would be true with regard to these larger disbursements dispersments that we are anticipating. We could expand that to reviewing them with the select board as well on a recurring basis. You know, I think a good starting point, honestly, would probably be just to review where we are to date with the previously approved and distributed grant funds as well. Because there are a couple of buckets of money that have come both for municipal and school purposes. But I I would envision us reporting back on that, not just on the past money, but once we know more about the guidelines on the future allocation as well.
Yeah, I I for one would like to just see what's how it's worked thus far and then how we anticipated. Handling the funds moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Earl Larry. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I have one question, and it was asked of me by someone. If if the Finance Director could explain free cash. They just don't understand it and asked if I would ask her just to give a simple explanation of what free cash is.
Madam Chair, is that okay?
Oh, yes, Ms. Rourke, please. This comes up frequently, actually. Since I've been on the board that that question's asked, so.
Many, many of my friends will hear me talking and, you know, I'll say, fund that with free cash and they'll say. We'll just fund it with free cash, free cash, free cash, you know, it's just free cash, so. It it's hard to understand, the terminology is kind of bizarre. But basically, it's unexpendited fund balance. So it is generated from excess revenues over budgeted revenues. And it is also generated from expenditure turnback. So basically, spending less than what was budgeted. You know, those type of things generate fund balance.
Being careful in your in keep being being careful in your financial planning, too.
Yes, very, we generate free cash. Through our conservative budgeting processes. You know, both on the revenue side as well as on the expenditure side. So, you know, at the end of the year, we turn back, you know, expense budgets. And we also exceed our revenue estimate, so that helps us generate free cash. And then that gets certified by the Department of Revenue annually. After we close the books in, so the our fiscal year ends June 30th, our new year begins July 1st. We close the books around August 15th. And then we have a submission to the Department of Revenue and they go through all of our. Accounts and they certify our free cash, similar to the enterprise funds where. The Department of Revenue certifies enterprise funds. You know, excess fund balance as routine earnings. I hope that helped.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a there's a finger being waved at us, too, and it probably has to do with shoring. Shoring up our position for bond eligibility, too, which I think is in part based upon. How much gets certified in free cash, so we're going to go to our guru here, Mrs. Hurlbut, who has her hand raised, to give us a little. To give us a little bit more of a tutorial on this, and you're muted, Abby.
Yeah, I know I was muted, but my picture kept flashing behind yours and back and forth, so I was unable to unmute myself. I would like Elizabeth to address the importance of free cash because. And and for people to understand that there are many communities that actually budget. A percentage above what they think they're going to need. To achieve free cash and. That North running doesn't have a particular policy of doing this, but by virtue of being conservative, we do end up with free cash. And it's very important because it increases our ability to borrow and it makes us look good financially. I am sure that there are a number of people walking around the streets of our fair village. That will say, well, if you've got this money left over, why didn't you just, you know. Buy more toys or budget differently, but that's not really the answer, Liz, do you want to give a. A slightly clearer explanation of the importance of generating free cash?
Through you, Madam Chair, the importance of generating free cash is. One, as discussed prior to Mrs. Herbert spoke, is. Our bond rating, which we just had reaffirmed as, you know. Double A two, but. It's also important for the town to have a reserve of free cash. You know, if there was ever an emergency and we couldn't dip into, you know, one of our stabilization funds. Or something didn't qualify under that. We also use free cash annually to fund various warrant articles as well as capital. So it is very prudent for communities to generate free cash. Now, it depends upon the year and how things are going budgetarily wise, both revenue and expense and. You know, how much we will generate, how tight your budget is, you know, how conservative you are. They all play roles in in the amount that you will generate within. Free cash. And in the past few years, we have been very conservative and curb spending. And have generated free cash in in good amounts.
Thank you, Ms. Rock. Mrs. Gonzalez, any other questions?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mister, Mrs. Mrs. Hurlbut. Again, you're muted.
Yeah, I mean, I think that a really simple way of looking at this. Is that if you spend your personal money down to the to the bottom line. And you want to go buy a car or you want to refinance your home or you want to. Take your mother out for dinner for a special occasion. Or you want to make sure your credit rating is good, you're not going to be able to do that if you don't have anything in a savings account. So in a very limited way. This is, you know. Good financial planning so that we don't end up going down the river.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurlbut. Do we have any more questions, Mrs. Gonzalez? Do you have any more questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Wallner?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Studo?
No, I won't say.
No.
Sorry, I won't say.
And I think, I do think in sort of go to to sort of follow along or piggyback upon those comments that. The things that were proposed to resolve the gap. By the use of free cash, like Ms. Rourke said, aren't, it's it's not unusual. For these sort of one time expenditures. But we don't want to make a regular habit of using the free cash for our opera, our regular operational costs, but the things that. That she showed us in this slide are some things that we we do and have in previous budgets. Paid for in the use of free cash. And now I have a more general question, too, for you, Ms. Rourke, that relates to the budgeting. And how we budget for and how the school budgets for its expenditures and. If you could do just a brief summary of how that works and does our board control. Specifically how the school department appropriates the funds that are budgeted in the annual appropriation.
So to answer your question, Madam Chair, the municipal departments annually are, you know, tasked with. How to submit their budget requests and they then submit their budget requests to the. Finance Office as well, you know, as the town administrator. We, as the. Finance Department and the town administrator review the departmental budget request. And then those departmental budget requests through the department heads are presented to the select board. In a budget hearing in conjunction with the Finance Committee. And those budgets are are reviewed thoroughly. And then the town administrator comes in with the. Town administrators recommended budget for the municipal departments. And then the select board and the Finance Committee also make their recommendations for. The departmental budgets and those are, you know, submitted to town meeting through the omnibus warrant article. The school department has a similar process, however, their, you know. Departments, division heads, super, you know, principals. Are tasked with coming up with budget requests, they submit them to the superintendent as well as the assistant superintendent of finance and business operations. And then those are reviewed with the school committee. And they, you know, come up with a recommended budget together. We, on the municipal side and as the select board and Finance Committee. You know, you can make your recommendation, however, you don't have the, it's not that you have the final say on. On that recommendation, we each have our own separate processes. I hope that answers your question.
Or does, I I just think that the, in theory, it is, it's accurate that we have the. The power of the purse, so to speak, which is also, you know, not ours. Ours exclusively because then it it has to be approved. At the town, in the town meeting. So in theory, like we've experienced at other town meetings, there could be a motion made to, you know. Take a line item out or take a cost out or reduce a school budget. By five million dollars if we don't like the philosophy, let's say, of how the school is operating, but. In in practice and actuality, although you've done a beautiful slideshow that explains how you were able to. Shrink this gap with the school, this is not an overnight or a snap decision, it's the result of. Multiple rounds of reviews and multiple meetings and. Multiple individuals who are working on this, not just the financial planning team, but the, but the. Financial department, so we don't do things again on a whim, we're doing things really conservatively and carefully and. While I appreciate the amazing effort. Not just on your part and the TA's part, but also on the schools and the school committee's part. Because I I feel that we are, we continue to sort of scrape off these things that we need. Not just for us, but for the municipal side. We need, we need positions that we just keep scraping off, and so does the school. And the school has basically, in yet another round. Come back, even though their needs increase over the time, just like our municipal needs increase and our revenue doesn't match that. They they need. Positions that they've, they've continued to to scrape, scrape out of the budget to be able to make the budget. Balance, things that they need for special ed, for example. And staffing they need for special ed and they need tech staffing and. Nothing could have highlighted that more than this month, they need nursing staffing for the students, we need a grant writer, we need a. We need a tech person for our web, right now, we have sort of the jack of all trades in Mr. Gilberto that's. Doing all of these things for us that people that sight unseen people don't even realize, and we keep scraping off those. Really important things that we need as a town to just shrink the deficit, so. The idea that we could just say, oh, we don't like your philosophy, so we're going to reduce your school budget by five million dollars, I think would have such a. Such an incredibly negative ripple effect here that. That that is, that's something that I wouldn't personally want to be seen, to be seen done by either the board or the community. Because these are careful, careful decisions that we make. Over the year, over careful planning with multiple people taking a look at these things to see how we can make it work, so. The, my appreciation goes to you, Ms. Rourke, for everything you did and all the hours you've spent to make this work. As well as the financial planning team, Mr. Gilberto, and as well as. Mr. Connolly, the superintendent, the school committee, Mr. Buckley, all of the people that. Are participating in these difficult decisions. But that it's carried us through this time and, you know, like Mr. Mr. O'Leary mentions. It's going to carry us through what we don't know, hopefully it'll carry us through with this careful planning. What the, what the next round of impact might be for us, even with that actual infusion of funds. So I thank you for everything that you've done to help us. Okay, so if there's no further, I don't know if there's anything else, Mr. Gilberto, that you want to add to that. But I think one other thing to just answer some of those rescue act questions is. That that we are anticipating guidance within the next sixty days, so. Perhaps by the time we go to town meeting, we might have some more firm. Information that we might be able to utilize in this sort of three vague. Three vague areas that we can use this for, which are helpful to us certainly. But hopefully we'll, we'll be able to talk about this at some more of our meetings when when more of that guidance from the Treasury arises, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so thank you, Ms. Rourke, and why don't we move on to the second part of this, Mr. Gilberto, which is to review. Your recommendations on the departmental budgets.
Certainly, so while the Finance Director is advancing the presentation. To make it very brief, you know, we we ask departments to really scale back their requests. When they submitted them back in November and December, and I think that most of you, you know, saw that. Through the joint budget hearings and the Finance Committee in February and March. So different from the past years, there wasn't really a ton. You know, to cut without, you know, having potential impacts and we had some, you know, some longstanding positions that we were holding vacant. Over the course of this current fiscal year that we needed to fund. We had recently added positions that we were not quite able to fill. That we also needed to fund, so we were really behind the eight ball, so to speak, in terms of the staffing associated with the budget, so this was a very different year than it has been in the past two or three fiscal years. Fortunately, you know, through the steps that we've identified, it will allow us to. Advance nearly all of the requests that you reviewed from the various operating departments, and so. We have a, you know, a spreadsheet that the Finance Director has put into the presentation. That we can go through line by line, but what I'll going to try to do is rather, rather than focus on that, is just sort of summarize it and remind folks of what what we're talking about here, which is. That we would be restoring a very critical position in the Treasurer Collector's front office, it's one of four. Positions that are actively involved in the assessing and taxing and collection of funds for the town. So a critical resource and a staff that has been taxed, particularly in recent months as activity is picked back up. So that is really, you know, position number one that will be able to be filled, it is not currently filled in this FY twenty one budget. The second is the grant writing and project management position out of the administrative office. Which was funded for last fiscal year, but then ultimately not filled and held vacant for the duration of last year and this current fiscal year. So that will also be able to be to be filled. There was a part time administrative position for the Veteran Services Office, which is also. Accounted for in that request that the recommendations will allow us to to be able to fill on a part time basis. There's also a request to add hours for the outreach worker in the Elder Affairs at the Elder Services Department. Which our recommendation will also allow us to. To proceed with funding. There was a request for additional staffing in the Youth Services Department, which is candidly, you know, potentially going to be a very critical part of how we come out of this pandemic. And is an area that might be able to be subsidized by federal funding as part of the pandemic response, but that's unknown at this time. Regardless of the outcome of the federal guidance, that would also be funded in this, in the recommendation that's here, because it was what was requested by the department. There was also a request for an increase in the subsidy of the Parks and Recreation Enterprise due to. A decrease in revenues in that department that you may remember Ms. Stevens identified, and we will be able to fund that for this upcoming fiscal year. It was an increase of approximately fifty four thousand dollars from the annual subsidy. And I don't believe it will be something that we are going to be able to do permanently, but it's something that we're able to do right now to bridge the gap while. The enterprise gets itself. Back on solid footing and programming increases over the coming months. The last thing that I'll identify is we're aware of the concern about. Whether or not we will receive the youth substance abuse grant. For future fiscal years. And we have a very important grant application that's under development and we expect to hear sometime in August whether we get that funding. We are holding an allocation of funding for that program, should that funding not be awarded for the period beginning October first and the federal funding will have dried up. And we will be addressing that and holding that within the salary pool of the fiscal year twenty twenty two operating budget. So that was a quick summary of sort of the big things that were in the budget requests and doing it in the interest of time. But I I believe you're, what you're, what you saw and what you heard in requests from departments, we are able to meet those requests. And the real, the only reason we're able to do so is because departments really scaled back those requests for for this current fiscal year. And, you know, we have a bit of a budget that's, last year was a survival budget. Because we didn't know what to expect and and the difficult decision that this board made, all of its members going back to last spring and Mr. Schultz as well, who's not on the board at this point, but was involved in the discussions. They put us in the position to be able to try to continue doing what we're doing and to build back a little bit. And so this budget will do that while we try to figure out what the long term financial progress is actually going to be as we come out of the pandemic. So I know I've said a lot, and I know a lot at one time, but that's sort of what we tried to do. The Finance Director was, if you can put that slide up on the screen. So folks can attempt to see it, I know it's a lot of numbers and text, so it's not the prettiest slide to look at. But we'll put it up there, but what it basically is going to show you is that we're able to fund the request that you that you saw come in. I I will note that there was a discussion about. It was not requested, but it, we, it's been highlighted as a need and that's for fire prevention staffing in the fire department. That is a fairly costly endeavor that we, it was not a request, but it's not something we were able to fund either at this point in time. Based on, just based on the cost associated with it. It's something that we'll continue to look at and 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 work towards, but we just weren't able to fund it at this point, and again, I can't stress enough, I know, we know it's a need. But it was not something that was part of the fire department's request, although it was highlighted in their budget presentation. Probably the most significant thing besides the staffing, I'd like to just speak to is the small capital. And when we say that, those are very important pieces of equipment that just happen to cost less than twenty five thousand dollars, so we fund them to the operating budget. And we have deferred a number of those over the past few years. But because they're one time in nature, because of the availability of free cash, we're going to be able to do those things. Which I think is another important step for us, now I'm going to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto, no, that's a great summary, but let's see if we have any questions, okay, Mr. O'Leary?
I'm sent, can you see this?
Yes.
I'm having trouble, okay, I know it's very small, but.
Can you do anything to get it to just take over? Can you do anything to get it to just take over the whole page so we don't have the side slides there?
Um.
I don't know if you just put a slideshow or.
I'm trying, but it's not, um, hold on.
If not, I can try on my end.
That made it small.
It worked, but it's worse. Maybe go back to what you had, let's.
There we go, sort of.
Well, we can't see the whole thing, but.
No, I'm, I'm fine. Doesn't let me choose the zoom, so.
Liz, where it says display settings, is there a way to get rid of the notes?
Is that better?
Yes.
Better.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's still small. I know, I'm sorry.
Fine.
That's okay. So these are all being funded?
I like the challenge you guys at this late hour anyway, so.
Normally we're going through a list of cuts and of course, that, that's not the case this year.
So would you be also able to, um. Send this to us, Ms. Rourke, email us at least this updated. I don't think, I don't remember seeing it in the packet, but I could be wrong.
It was not in the packet, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay.
I, I will make sure it gets added to, uh, share file and, um, that. The transcript and the recording secretary and the finance committee are seen.
So can we, um. Let's just see if we, do we have any questions at this point, Mr. O'Leary, or comment?
Yeah, just, no, my first comment is it's, it's heartening to see that we're able to, uh, restore and. Even expand some of the services that we. Consider vital and, um, meet some of the requests that the department has made. I guess my, my only question is. What didn't make the cut? Because an awful lot did, which is, which is heartening and I'm, um. I'm assuming that the financial planning team is on board with your recommendations at this point also, so I again. Want to echo the, the chair's comments in relation to close working relationship with the school department and the finance committee. To get to this point.
Vincenzo, are you gambling while the meeting's going on?
But anyways, I just didn't know, so it didn't make the cut, um.
Madam Chair, through you to the finance director.
It's just Mr.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to, uh, select floor member, O'Leary, uh. As you can see here, you're not seeing a column with the town administrators, um. Recommended budget, so all of the departmental requests, um, were funded. So anything that the departments came to you and presented, um, have been funded.
The, the, the youth services so wanted to, but that was.
That was funded.
Okay, oh, it was, all right. I thought that was one of the minus ones. Okay.
Addiction of the assistant, uh.
Great. Okay, you just said that, I'm sorry. But Mr. O'Leary, I think, um, the. I think that the way that the budgets were requested were. Almost level funding, you know, to sort of. Ensure that we were able to make it through the, make it through successfully financially, so.
And also I think it's been a good exercise annually here, last several years, for the department heads to. Evaluate the, the services that they provide, the costs associated with it and how they go about doing it. And there's been some, some changes as to the approach and. Um, which again allows us to, uh, to adapt and. Be more efficient, but in many instances, we've just been running shorthanded and, uh. Chasing our tails here. It, it's, it's great to see that, uh, we're able to, um, bolster. The delivery of services, uh, that are being required and being requested of us. So I think it, I think it's wonderful and I think it's great that, uh. Been able to. Present us with a balanced budget and still accomplishes. It's, it's quite an accomplishment.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Walner, questions, comments?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Studo?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I, I'm just thrilled to see, um, some of this, the veteran services. Person, the elder services, just, this is great news for a lot of these. A lot of people are going to be happy.
I just had one other question though, just in relation to, uh, the library's been requesting. Position for a number of years and we haven't been able to accommodate that, but do we foresee that? At some point maybe throughout the upcoming fiscal year or is the reason why? It wasn't?
Madam Chair, through you. So there are a handful of, of items that we're going to be looking at as we go forward with available federal funding. One thing that I mentioned is, you know, the funding of the part-time, um, as- assistant, um, director for youth services. Again, because of its part-time nature is. A bit more affordable than other positions might be, so we were able to do something, you know, in terms of funding it. But we, that may be something that's eligible for federal funding. Ultimately, because of, uh, the potential link to the response to the pandemic that it might, um, might connect with. Similarly, could be the case with the type of outreach that the library is looking to do with that position. So, you know, that may be one where we see that we can build into a plan, funding from the federal, um, federal government to try to get that position off the ground. So it's very much. Um, yeah, in, uh, in the discussion. Um, similar, uh, you know, approach with regard to, um, our, uh, facilities maintenance. Um, you know, there's some things that we're going to need to do as we look to reopen more of the municipal facilities in terms of staffing. Um, maybe not necessarily new positions, but additional hours and coverage. That we'll look to do and that's another area where we think the federal government will be able to, you know, be eligible. We're just looking to get some more guidance on it, but it's very much in the, in the discussion, um, Mr. O'Leary.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, I think we were, everyone, Mr. Walner, did you, you're all set?
All set.
Studo's all set, Mrs. Gonzalez, you're all set?
That, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Rourke, you do have your, yeah, you have your hand raised.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I just wanted to, um, pay you back on what the town administrator said and just to. Um, remind everybody that the library, um. Did not submit that, uh, program or position for FY twenty-two. That was not one of their departmental budget requests. It was discussed during their budget presentation, however, it was not submitted as a request. Uh, similar to the fire department, the fire department discussed, uh, during their budget presentation. Uh, the fire prevention officer, however, that was not part of their departmental budget request because, again, um. This is a, even though it may seem like a hefty budget, it, it's a very slim, um. Budget departments were very conservative in their, their requests. Um, so many departments did not, um. Re- request certain, uh, positions. And, um, you know, some that were positions that were held vacant, you know, or did request to have them restored. Um, so just, just, I, I wanted everybody to be clear on that. I wanted that the town administrator wasn't funding those positions. They just were not. Requested for FY twenty-two by the department, um, but those are something that we can definitely look at.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rourke.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilberto?
The finance director reminded me of one item that came up, which is the additional cost for the hybrid police cruisers. I believe you are carrying that cost in the recommendation as well. That was not in the original request. But it was a modification that was submitted after the fact based on a review of the performance. And, yeah, could you just speak to that list?
Yes, so that is included in the police department's, um, uh, miscellaneous capital, uh, request of a hundred and eighteen thousand. Seven forty-four and it was for two cruisers. Um, the quote. Me- needed to be refreshed, I guess, or updated to include the mass hybrid vehicles after the discussion. At the Saturday budget hearing for the police department. And I, I want to say it was sixty-three hundred dollars or six thousand three eighteen, um, in that range. So that has been updated and that is included in, in the figure for the police department miscellaneous capital. So, thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Did, just. Just, just in relation to, and again, I'm sure it happened, I mean, we got some presentations from the department. Heads in relation to, uh, their requests and, and most of them were not, uh, a wish list, you know, as. Positions that they felt were essential for smooth operations for the. Uh, various departments. And, and I guess I don't, maybe it's semantics, but. When they made their presentation to us. And then you say they, they didn't submit it as a, as a final budget presentation. Was it because they were. Encouraged not to or? Didn't, I mean, someone had to prioritize it rather than, we didn't wait, we didn't, we weren't requested as a board. To say thumbs up, thumbs down. I mean, you gave some opinions that day when they were there. But then when the final budget presentation, excuse me, or submissions were made to the administration. I, again, maybe I missed it. I was unaware. That, um. Certain positions were not requested. I was under the assumption that they were requested. And at some point during the budgetary discussions between the administration and the department heads. Things were. Taken up. That maybe it's semantics, but, um. I was in a way, and I'm just using the library as an example, that the request wasn't made.
I.
Because it was made, I mean, it was presented.
So through you, Madam Chair, if I may?
Ms. Rourke.
The, when the department submit their budgets to the finance department as well as the town administrator. That position was not requested. It was mentioned in their presentation as they, it's still like a want. Um, but she was, the, the library director was not requesting it for FY twenty-two.
Yeah, and I don't mean to pick on the library, but I'm even thinking about, you know, the, the fire department, uh, position that was discussed. I mean, I have some opinions on that too, but, uh.
He did not request it for FY twenty-two.
I, I think the, the question relates more to the guidance. So we did ask all departments to submit. Level services requests. And we said level services, we said level services back to. You know, basically the day before the pandemic started, if you will. And so a number of things that had been requested along the way were not requested. Uh, Mr. O'Leary, I'm not sure if maybe that's what you're referring to. Some opt, most did not submit anything. A couple did say, look, this is something that's a need. We're going to need to submit it anyway. Um, the youth position being one of them. Um, so that, that's, I think, where the difference is, is identified.
Um, I just, uh, did it again. Maybe it's just the way that I'm interpreting what's being said, you know, I, I find it hard to believe that. What was presented to us were not requests. And then, uh. I can understand where things get called out, but, uh. But that's good. I'm fine. Let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So our next order of business is to review the draft warrant, June twenty twenty-one annual town meeting. For the June, for the June twenty twenty-one annual town meeting.
Madam Chair, may I share my screen?
Sure, that was, that's, that'd be great.
Okay. And, uh, through you, Madam Chair. Um, what I, what I will do is I'll go through each of the articles if you would like, or I can just kind of focus on what's changed from the last meeting. It's really your preference.
Sure, why don't, why don't you just briefly run through each of them in case there's, there are questions and if the members have any questions to, to. You know. Just jump in and we'll recognize you.
So I, I see the finance director may still be here. Liz, are you still there? Oh, okay. So we'll go through, um, each of them. Um, first on the budget amendment, um, I, I'm not aware of anything that's been identified as a need for a transfer at this point in time, but. Uh, we expect that there will be some adjustments that will have to be made during the June town meeting. And we will, um, provide the, the latest and greatest recommendation when the warrant is signed on, um. On May tenth, but, uh, it'll likely be evolving right up until the date of town meeting. The snow and ice deficit, we are expecting to have a deficit beyond what we normally carry over the new fiscal year. We've accounted for that in our financial planning. Um, and there will be an appropriation of funding that will be, uh, recommended there. Um, at, uh, under that article, I believe it's between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, appropriating funds to the capital improvement stabilization fund, we are looking at an appropriation of between one million and one point two million dollars into that fund. Um, the source being free cash. The water, uh, stabilization fund, we're normally transferring funds depending upon what's available for retained earnings and we'll make a determination if we get closer to town meeting. Um, the appropriation of money to the stabilization fund, we expect it will be an appropriation, um. Depending upon the balance of free cash, um, from fiscal year twenty, uh, year ending June thirtieth, twenty. Twenty, um, and, um. Right now, I think we're targeting that we expect a surplus of about three hundred thousand dollars after we go through the. Financing mechanisms associated with the other items on the warrants. One thing we've been discussing is allocating some funding to both Article Five and Article Six, stabilization fund and OPEB. As a way to sort of build up money we're, we're setting aside. Article seven, if there's any funding available at the end of the solid waste year, we usually transfer those funds out of a budget into the fund. It's unlikely there's going to be much based on the pressure that we know is on the, uh, that budget right now, um, as we've discussed over multiple meetings. Article eight would be a, a, a transfer of funding within this fiscal year of the PFA. We do not expect to recommend. A transfer at this point in time based on the performance of the plan. Um, that, that transfer is normally made in the October town meeting and that's what we expect will happen with the rent, uh, remaining funds from FY twenty-one's budget. Article nine is routine, as is Article ten, Article eleven. And Article twelve, Article thirteen, um, authorizes chapter ninety money. We expect it to be consistent with, with what it has been over previous years based on a letter from the. State and I think we're at five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars off the top of my head. We don't authorize or appropriate the money, we just authorize the ability to spend the money, whatever it is that comes through from the state as required in the state law. We know we will have a couple of, uh, prior year bills, um, that will need to be paid, one of which goes back to fiscal years, but just popped up. And we will have a funding source identified. Article fifteen, we've been talking with town council relative to the receipt reserve fund. And for the cell tower and we are going to be required to request, um, special legislation in order to be able to continue. Um, operating the cell tower revenue source in the way that we have, which is to. Have the payments come in from the leases and the funding set into our receipts reserve account. From which we appropriate funding into the annual operating budget on an annual basis. Um, it is something that other communities do for, uh, similar type, um, arrangements. But it does require another legislative blessing, which we will be seeking, uh, after a full or full town meeting. And I know there was a lot of confusion, partially because we had the wrong statutory citation in the, in the legislation to begin, in the article to begin with. But it's going to actually be different than what you have in your packet. It's going to need to be an actual request for special legislation in order to do this. Um, but we do not expect it to be an, an issue. The operating budget, retirement obligations, the appropriation of the OPEB. Those are all routine as part of our annual budget and are accounted for in our financial planning. Transferring funds to the school district reserve fund, um, for other districts, special education and other costs. We're hoping to be able to recommend a hundred thousand dollar transfer. This will be the second one hundred thousand dollar transfer since the fund was established a couple of years ago. Um, nothing identified yet for rescinding authorizations to borrow, but we'll continue to look at any of the old projects that, through which we don't need any borrowing. You will receive a recommendation on May tenth for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital expenditures, and I know Mrs. Gonzalez and Mrs. Manipelli have been in many of those meetings. Um, we're getting very close. We had a little bit of a hiccup with, uh. Um, a large project that had been overlooked, but we've, um, been able to look further at that and have a bit more time, so we'll be. Um, being able to address that, um, not for June of this year, but for June of next year. But there will be a complete capital plan, different than what you saw last year. We expect it to be the standard. Um, comprehensive capital investment, um, program with borrowing and free cash appropriations. Um, presented to you, um, on May tenth. Appropriating money to the PFA, um, again, we won't. We're likely not to make an appropriation, um, during the June meeting, but we expect to be making an appropriation at the October meeting. We're expected to ask for fifty thousand dollars for small, uh, repairs for town buildings. We are not expecting an appropriation. We are not expecting an appropriation of money for special counsel legal expenses. We are expecting an appropriation of funding for legal expenses associated with Twenty Elm Street. And right now, I'm planning to recommend appropriating a hundred thousand dollars so that we remain in a very strong position relative to this litigation. Article twenty seven, this would amend the code of North Reading, our bylaws, to incorporate the school rental revolving fund that was approved, I believe, at June town meeting last year. So the account was approved, but we didn't actually approve the change to the bylaw that's required under the statute. And a sister article to that, a corresponding article is to set the dollar amount that's required with that. And I've been in conversation with the school business officer, we believe it's going to be a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars if I remember correctly. Article twenty eight, the finance director is looking, um, at all of our various revolving funds just to confirm that the the caps are the right numbers. And if there are any that need to be modified, we will address them here, but it is possible that we pass over this article. We are, we're confident that we don't need to make any adjustments before the article is signed, we'll actually recommend that the board um, take it off the warrant, but we may not be through the review at that point. Then we're into the, um, the various zoning articles, which we, I think, discussed at length, not only earlier this evening, but at the last meeting, um, which remain on, um, the warrant, both for the small cell and for the overlay district of senior housing. Um, and as well, uh, there is, as you know, a citizen petition for the rezoning of the former Seven Acres poultry farm on there, sorry, there's all, I know this was a marked up copy, so it must have been hard to look at. Um, the citizen petition is here, along with the change to the zoning map to reflect both the citizen petition and the senior, um, housing overlay article. So I think we've really narrowed the scope of what what we're looking to do with this town meeting. Um, you know, we do have some things on there that are not necessarily essential, but I would classify as important and timely. And, um, you know, we've taken the steps to recommend and prepare for an outdoor town meeting with all our appropriate social distancing protections in place to allow us to get through this business in what we hope will be a, you know, a fairly timely fashion. Um, so I know that was a lot, but that's that's the update. Um, the article relative to the charter change concerning compensation for elected officials, as you know, was discussed at the last meeting, we've taken it up, taken it off, based on the board's feedback.
Um, just, uh, for purposes of our next meeting, this will be finalized for us to.
To sign.
Right, to sign, okay. And do we have any questions of these articles, um, of the members, Mr. O'Leary? None, Mr. Wallner?
Just one question, remember last year, to kind of expedite things, we put all the budgetary things up front. Does that cell phone revenue, would that be just a real quick, uh, item, or do you think that's going to be a discussion point?
Uh, where we've been leasing the top towers for, I think, ten years at this point, I I I'm not sure how controversial it is, um, there is authority for the leases, I don't think that that's in dispute. Um, this is really a housekeeping item more than anything else, so I don't expect it to be controversial.
Okay.
We're not asking for authority to put cell towers to on on water towers, they're already there. And and we have the authority from town meeting to have done it, the board got the authority back, I think, in two thousand eleven or twelve. So I don't expect it to be.
Yeah, I just don't want to drag the, you know, drag the, this, you know, the money stuff down in the middle by some controversial thing, to put the embrace through that, to get the zoning ones and everything else that.
I I would say, um, through you, Madam Chair, the reason we put it there is because if, uh, if it's not the will of town meeting to act in that fashion, as was recommended, we will have a hole in the operating budget that we're going to have to deal with when we come to that article. Um, so I I think it really will benefit us to know the answer. Um, whether town meeting is going to be okay with proceeding in that fashion, then we'll work with the delegation to get the legislation, um, filed. Um, we will have a contingency plan for appropriation if need be, but it would require a change to the operating budget in order to make sure it remains balanced.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Mr. Wallner? Okay. All set? Or any questions? Oh, Mrs. Studo's frozen. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Miss.
Can you hear me, I'm all set?
We can hear you, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. All right, so we are moving, so we'll see that finalized version.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All set, we'll see our finalized version at the next, the next meeting. Uh, and then our next order of business is the town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to announce that Joseph Parisi has been appointed Director of Public Works effective Wednesday, May twelfth. Mr. Parisi brings nineteen years of experience as Director of Public Works in Gloucester in Rockport, as well as nine years in the mayor's and assessor's offices in the city of Gloucester. He has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Worcester Polytechnic Institute, is a licensed construction supervisor, and a Massachusetts certified public purchasing official. We welcome Mr. Parisi, um, as he'll be joining us in, uh, in the next few weeks. And we'll have him on an agenda for introduction, um, at either, at one of the main meetings. Based on input from the town planner and feedback from the land utilization committee, I intend to submit the attached draft letter to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council in support of an application of the town of Lynnfield for technical assistance evaluating the future use of land that's near the North Reading Lynnfield, Middle Ten and Eby border. Um, they have a project that they've come up with for a vision for, um, the open space in that area. And, um, something that is very much consistent with the ongoing planning efforts for the, um, the pedestrian trail, the recreational trail that LUC has been working on. There are a number of upcoming recycling events that are scheduled, including curbside collection of yard waste this upcoming Saturday, May first. Items should be curbside by six thirty AM. Similarly, the curbside collection of scrap metal will be Saturday, May eighth. And there will be a special waste collection day at the DBW Yard in the morning of Saturday, June twelfth. I included a detailed flyer, uh, which is posted on the town website. Water main replacement on North Street continues. The contractor's been flushing and testing the main between Main Street and Lowell Road, and will be connecting houses in the coming days. Temporary main has been installed on the east side between Main Street and Moose Tower. Construction will be occurring during the daytime. And while the plan is to keep the road open, the public should anticipate significant delays as it's reduced to one lane or traffic is required to be stopped, uh, at various points in time. Um, they have made a lot of progress, uh, here. There was some discussion about whether, um, doing night work was an option, but I think that the feeling was the more appropriate route based on the type of work was to try to get the work done in the daytime as it was originally planned to be done. And then COVID nineteen data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health weekly report showed our risk level as yellow with fourteen, um, uh, sixty one cases over the fourteen day period leading up to the test. A percent positivity rate of the fourteen day period in three point five three percent and a rate of twenty six point two for one hundred thousand residents for a total case count going back to the beginning of pandemic of one thousand three hundred and seventy nine cases. And finally, um, I will note, and I know that there's been some information out there in the transcript as well, um, that the, um, the clerk, town clerk's office is accepting, uh, applications for early voting ballots. Applications must be submitted to the town clerk's office by this Wednesday at four o'clock PM. Um, and then the ballot must be returned to the town hall, um, in the ballot box, um, uh, out front by seven o'clock on, uh, Monday, on Tuesday, May fourth election day. So I just remind the public of that as well. I know that was a lot, but thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions, Mr. O'Leary? None, Mr. Wallner?
No.
Mr. Studo? Mrs. Gonzalez? Okay, we are on to board member reports, Mr. O'Leary?
Just, uh, if you recall, about a month or so ago, I brought up the issue relating to the biomass plant that was being proposed out in the Palmer Springfield area and asked that we get a report from Reading Municipal Light Department in relation to, first of all, how the contract was signed by Reading Municipal Light and, um, the impact that it was going to have and what due diligence was done and how transparent, uh, the action was taken. I was just curious as to if there's been any follow up on that, but just in relation to that, if you've read the paper over the last week or two, uh, the big biomass plant that was being proposed out there, that, uh, Reading Municipal Light was the single largest buyer of, uh, signing up to buy from that plant, actually did not pass the regulatory muster for good reason and did not get permits that were required, uh, by DEP. Now, they may still appeal it, but it was denied for, uh, good environmental reasons. And, um, again, I would like to understand as a member of the board here, but also as a rate payer, you know, what Reading Municipal Light is planning on doing in relation to exiting the deal, if they can. And, uh, what are they planning on doing moving forward in relation to, um, engaging in activities and contracts that would be more environmentally, uh, sensitive and appropriate, knowing what we know in relation to climate change and also the impact of such plants as wood burning plants, uh, have on the immediate environment in those communities around Palmer. So I I would still like to have some sort of public discussion with Reading Municipal Light as to explaining rationale for getting into what they got into, and now what is their exit strategy, if there is one, in relation to what they did sign up for. So I still would like a, a follow up. If there's been any other conversation or follow up in relation to that.
Mr. Just, Mr. O'Leary, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think Mr. Gilberto wanted to try to speak to that issue, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. O'Leary was kind enough to make me aware of the change in the regulatory status, which I was unaware of. Um, I did not have the opportunity to reach out to RMLD this afternoon, Mr. O'Leary, but I will do so tomorrow. Um, and advise that we'd like to hear from him directly, um, about, uh, about what happened, um, either at the May tenth or the May, um, May twenty fourth meetings.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the only other matter, Madam Chair, that I'd like to address is, um, we have an election coming up, where you and I are both on the ballot, and I expect we're going to be a big draw, we have a huge turnout. But joking aside, what I would ask the the general public to do i- is to please come out and and vote. And I understand there are no contested races on the ballot, but you know, for those of us that uh, volunteer our time and services, um, you know, we spend literally hundreds and hundreds of hours a year. It would be nice if people would just take a little bit of time, uh, out of their busy schedules to come out and just express their appreciation by voting. And just come out anyway, I mean, the the right to vote is 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 sacred. Uh, the ability to vote is, uh, is sacred. And again, I think it's a fine way of recognition of those that are willing to to sacrifice and put their name on the ballot and serve the community and to their families for allowing us to do so. It's just a nice way of doing it, and I understand there's no contested races, so it's not a big draw. But by the same token, we should, uh, ask our community members to, uh, to come out and just show their support by endorsing the people that are running for office, uh, including my fellow board member, Mrs. Manuelli, members of the school committee, planning commission, moderator, everybody that's on the ballot, housing authority. It's just important for the public to come out and give some easy recognition for the people that volunteered. So I would urge people to please come out and vote. Um, let's turn the page on extremely low turnouts and let's exercise our right and recognize the fortitude, which is a great privilege, so. Uh, just would ask everybody, please come out and support those that are on the ballot. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Studo?
Um, so I'd like to say that, uh, Smanny Pally, Mr. O'Leary, you need to break my record of two hundred fifty three last year the worst COVID stretch, so that's, you know, just no pressure, anybody listening. Um, so, uh, well, I was going to give an update on EDC, but I think it's very clear what we've been doing there, so I don't really have to give that. Um, same with CPC, nothing, um, nothing new, some more outreach will be given, uh, potentially to business owners, uh, in the Winter Street, um, Main Street possible development, so there's not really any big update there from last time. It's just, again, uh, there's more outreach to the business owners and we'll see where that leads. Uh, and then I did want to point out though, though, so there's been, there's been a working group talking about the possible development on Carpenter Drive. And there is a community, um, a Butters were sent the letter a couple of weeks back, and tomorrow there is a meeting where any concern, the butter, you know, questions, like any, um, the the town is seeking feedback, um, and I like to say it's very important because there's a town-owned piece of land. And being that it's that, it's, uh, you know, it's something where the citizens opinions and concerns are going to be taken seriously because, again, it's not a private developer who owns the land, it's the town. So that's something that, you know, if there's any improvements, ideas, something, I know that, um, I've learned a lot about that product, that parcel of land that it's been, I think now we're going on eight years in the making, it might be, you know, maybe even longer, but you know, I understand that. So I encourage everyone who has an opinion on it or wants to give a, an opinion, positive or negative, hopefully mostly positive, you know, from a, uh, to please join. And I believe that the, uh, the Zoom information, a CPC meeting was, uh, posted for that because I think there's going to be more than two members, so just in case there was a quorum, you know, because of the quorum rules. So I think you just have to go to the town calendar and there's a Zoom link, and I believe the start time is seven, based on the calendar.
Tomorrow evening, seven PM, public hearing.
And, uh, yeah.
A lot of information on the web, town's website with regard to a few design proposals for senior housing on Carpenter Drive on the land that the town owns, which is the roadway in and to rather large parcels, um, connected by that roadway. And, um, there, there, there are design plans, Mr. Gilberto, right, that are proposed on the, on the website. You're muted, but they're, they're, they're seeking public input with respect to those few design proposals that were presented, and this, this parcel has been earmarked for quite some time now for, for senior housing.
Correct.
And it was initially the subject of grant, a grant, uh, funded proposal that's going back quite a few years, all right, Mr. Gilberto?
That's correct, yes, it was, um, to be funded through a federal grant program that I believe Mystic Valley Elder Services was going to take advantage of. The property, I think, was transferred from the Care, Custody and Control of the School Committee to the Select Board, a Board of Selectmen at the time, um, at town meeting for purposes of development for affordable housing for seniors. The funding dried up, it's kind of sat there undeveloped at this point in time. And the CPC, I think, over the past two years, with the board's, um, cooperation and encouragement has re-energized or restarted the review of what might be feasible on that property. And so there are some concepts that the engineers have come up with based upon the site, the ability to locate wastewater treatment on site, um, that I know that they will review. But as Mr. Studo indicated, I mean, the meeting is really a very important part of getting some feedback from the neighborhood about what might or might not work in the neighborhood because it's going to be a very important part of the decision-making, I'm sure, for all of us.
And the last point I'd like to make to fellow board members, that this, uh, purposely, uh, the working group wanted this meeting first, and then it comes to us. So we would have kind of not just the opinion of, you know, a group of people, which is very well represented by everyone, you know, CPC, five, sorry, everyone, people know, um, but then the next step would be to come for the first series of discussions in front of us to kind of, you know, kind of give, I I I think that a butter feedback was going to be very important because, you know, I mean, if they had come to us before that meeting, it would have been like, well, what do the people think, right? I I would have been one of the first questions we asked, because that's what we always ask, that's what we're kind of, I feel like that's our, one of our primary things, so. So, yeah, um, you know, the the TA is going to be kind enough to attend, uh, which I think will help just because I I believe Mr. Pierce will be giving the presentation. But I think that, um, you know, because we, in reality, my understanding is that for our purposes, we don't even have enough information to even give an opinion yet as a board because we're just, there's not enough, uh, as it's conceptual and in theory only. So I think it'll be a really nice, I I I think we'll get a really nice, uh, idea of where the community's at tomorrow. I'm sure it's the first of many meetings, so. And other than that, um, I'll probably mention it a few times, but when, when that EDC event goes through, hopefully safely, as Mr. Wallner mentioned, uh, it'd be really nice if everybody on this board showed up and made me look good, that I at least I could get my board to this community event. So I'm just gonna, you know, I'm probably gonna repeat it a few times, but I'll ask now and I'll ask every week that we have a meeting till then, so that's my little, uh, ask. And I'll buy everybody a drink with my own money. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Studo. Mr. Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I look forward to the invite, it's always fun to get together. I'll pass him a drink, though, so you'll be all set. Um, so just that, uh, for community notice, Carl, Carl, Cars Hallmark is closing this Friday. So if you haven't gone down. So if you haven't gone down to say goodbye to Mary Ellen and Karen, try to get down there, I don't know how much inventory is left, because my wife, I think, bought out most of the store. We have my cards coming out of our ears and a bunch of things, so anyways, try to get down there and say goodbye to them. The tax committee actually met today to meet with the food pantry, because they actually turn out to be a significant face for people who need help. And so we're trying to, just as a reminder, we're trying to, as a tax committee, you know, there's, there's a part of the tax committee that reaches out to people that are are not in a good way, and it helps to reach out and offer them programs that helps them get through tough times. And so we're trying to create synergistic resources for people to reach out to, and it turns out the food pantry, as we learned today, was a great great example of someone who's forth facing with people. And we may want to work with them to figure out our program, so much more to come on that. And then Phil Hertz, who's leading the bike trail initiative, I think, is pulling wheelies with the release of that letter in his neighborhood, you know, for the getting the towns, getting us a letter out, the M A P C saying we want to join with Winfield, Ebydy and Milton in, you know, helping to make this bike path happen. We should realize that, you know, the cost of this bike path is possibly around eight million dollars, but without the and the vast D O T will pick up almost all of it, but without them agreeing to the to, they're very strict conditions, we don't have any way to get that funding, this, this letter and this effort having a community town cooperation goes a long ways, the mass D O T saying yes for our project, so there's a lot, a lot of other hurdles, but this is really great news in the evolution of this project. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner, Mrs. Gonzalez, anything?
Yeah. I would also like to encourage everyone to go down to Cars, I went down and said my goodbyes this week and also stocked up on my cards and gifts and you know, really sad, you know, just been bringing the kids in there every Christmas to pick out their Hallmark ornaments, I mean, they're all grown now, but you know, just a lot of memories there and it's sad to see them go, so, yeah, help them out, you know, try to clear out that inventory for them. Community Impact Team had a bring your used drugs, I can't think of that, I'm so tired, I can't think of the actual name of that, Mr. Gilberto.
Prescription drug take back.
Thank you. They collected over two hundred and twenty pounds of unused drugs on April twenty fourth, which was fantastic, so. Yeah, that was, it was a great turnout. And as far as recycling, we, Mr. Gilberto covered a lot of that, and just on a side note, we are going forward with talks to continue talking about pay as you throw. What a lot of people don't realize is just because we signed the trash contract does not mean that we cannot implement pay as you throw going forward, it can be a separate issue, and it can be different than we've had it in the past, there are lots of options. Basically, for an example of, you know, paying your regular trash fee and then anything extra you want to put out, you put a sticker on, so it doesn't put people out to have to run out and get stickers just for their regular trash. It would just be extra money coming in for the extra trash, so just ideas like that going forward with recycling committee to talk about those things, and that would be it.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I think, I think Mr. O'Leary mentioned, and I was going to ask that we did get a pretty detailed letter from Mr. Lore with regard to the, those sort of things that the the trashy is going towards that, you know, he raised, raises the issue of, you know, it's not just the increase in the, in the cost of the contract, so I think it would help, even if the, if the committee were to outline that, as well as the work the committee did to kind of compare what we do to other communities and you know, the cost factor or the cost differential or the cost savings between us and other communities and what they're doing, and, and, and when you do consider and evaluate the pay as you throw, consider the communities that that utilize it and had to scrap it and move on to something different, because it just didn't, didn't work or meet the needs of the community, so. Or, well, then it did work and they're still using it, so. That would be help, I think, to us as we evaluate, because I think we should just keep, keep on the path that we're on, which is a massive increase all at once, and just if we need to buffer the increase to cover, cover the costs, we should know all these details and have all this information ready, so. I was wondering what, what we were going to be doing to kind of respond to the information that he's presented and asking us to.
So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're discussing maybe having kind of a public meeting, you know, to let people come on and discuss and, you know, that kind of a thing, there's a lot to talk about, and there's a lot of options we can think about going forward.
That's great. Okay, that sounds good, and we're, so just, I'm all set, I think everything that needs to be said was said. And so do we have a motion to adjourn?
You don't want to drag it out till ten o'clock?
Oh, I just, I just peeked at the time and I if we're going to keep Allison around, we better start.
Well, second then.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Manu Pelli is aye.
Thank you, everybody.